Yeah, that's right. You were the one who reminded me of that. First time I tried to. Why isn't it working? You all set? Good evening and welcome to the May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Town of Lake Luzerne zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Would you all please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice.
On this evening's agenda, we have two public hearings. To be the first items of business. Public hearing for area variance two zero two three A V dash two. Applicant Michael Goodheart, agent for owners Nancy Seed and Matt Witten, five twenty-eight Gailey Hill Road, Lake Luzerne. Asking for side yard setback relief. This is the second variance request for this parcel. Public hearing number two. Public hearing for area variance two zero two-two A V dash four. Applicant Lisa Williams, owner three forty-nine Gailey Hill Road, Lake Luzerne. Asking for a height variance for an accessory structure. Then we have minutes to look at and new and old business. Since we do have public hearing for two area variances. Um, I would like to go over first. The duties and responsibilities of the zoning Board of Appeals. For an area variance. From Article thirteen of the zoning manual, excuse me, zoning regulations. Zoning Board of Appeal should have the power upon the appeal from decision or determination of an administrative official charged with the enforcement of this code. To grant area variances from the area or dimensional requirements of this code. In making this determination, the zoning Board of Appeal should take into consideration the benefit to the applicant. If the variance is granted as weighed against any detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. And making such determination, the board shall also consider the following tests. Not all five tests are required to be met in order to grant the area variance. Number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced on the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will create be created by granting the area variance. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning Board of Appeals. But shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. The zoning more of appeals and granting of area variances shall grant the minimum variance that shall be deemed necessary and adequate and at the same time preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. And the health, safety and welfare of the community. Our first priority is to support the town's area and use zoning ordinances as we try to bring non-conforming properties in full conformance. And that is our mission this evening. With that, I would like to proceed to public hearing for area variance two zero two-three A V dash two. Applicant Michael Goodheart, agent for owners Nancy Seed and Matt Witten, five twenty-eight Gailey Hill Road, Lake Luzerne. Asking for side yard setback relief, second variance request for this parcel. Karen, would you read the public notice? Oh. She had a way. Okay, and then when she's gone, would you call the roll?
Yes, here. Here.
Ms. McMahon?
Here.
Mr. Bowler?
Present.
Karen.
Here. Karen, would you read the public notice for the area variant two zero two-three A V dash two?
Please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the town of Lake Luzerne, the zoning Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven oh five P M. At the regularly scheduled meeting, the meeting will be held at the municipal complex five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, town of Lake Luzerne, to hear comments on the following. Area variance twenty twenty-three A V dash two applicant agent Michael Goodheart, owner Nancy Side and Matt Witten. Parcel number two nine two point eight dash one dash six Hamlet Residential Zone H R point two eight acres. Location five twenty-eight Gailey Hill Road. The applicant has applied for a variance from the zoning Board of Appeals for relief from the zoning ordinance of the town of Lake Luzerne. Article five dimension requirements, A dimensional table side yard setback. The total proposed side yard setback is twenty-two feet, nine inches and a minimum of thirty is required. They are asking for a variance of seven feet, three inches. A copy of the application as well as other supporting documents are in file with the office of the zoning officer. And may be reviewed by interested members of the public during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M to one thirty P M. All parties in interest and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard in respect to the proposed variance at the public hearing. Persons may respond by letter, appear in person, or by agent, or participate via Zoom. Access Zoom by computer at zoom dot com or by phone at six four six five five eight dash eight six five six. The meeting access code for Zoom is nine zero two six eight seven nine seven six four. Karen Putney, zoning offers zoning officer, town of Lake Luzerne. P O Box three seventy-five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, New York, one two eight four six five one eight six nine six two seven one one extension four, Lake Luzerne four at Albany, T W C B C dot com, published May first. I did receive three emails in regard to this. Let me put them in some kind of order. This one would be the first. This was from um Amy Side. On Saturday, April twenty-ninth, Dear Karen, thank you for reading or submitting the following at the variance hearing on May eleventh. We are writing again to encourage the board to approve the request by Nancy Side and Matt Witten to enlarge their porch. We understand this will cause their house to be seven feet, three inches too close to the side boundary of their property. We own the property on that side of their house and have no objection to their proposal. Thank you, Richard Solomon and Amy Side, five thirty-six Gailey Hill Road. The second one was from Abby Gruin on Monday, May eighth. Dear zoning board members, we received a notice regarding the requested variance for five twenty-eight Gailey Hill Road. We live at ten Hillcrest Drive across Gailey Hill Road from five twenty-eight Gailey Hill Road. We are fully supportive of the granting of this variance. Kind regards, Robert Grodebarred and Mary Gruin. The third one was from Rachel Whitmer on Monday, May eighth. Dear Ms. Putney, my name is Rachel Whitmer and I am one of the owners of five twenty-three Gailey Hill Road in Lake Luzerne. My neighbors Nancy Side and Matt Witten at five twenty-eight Gailey Hill Road have applied for a variance to extend their porch. I have no objections to this construction. Sincerely, Rachel Whitmer. That's those were the only three that I received.
Okay. And just for the record, this is seeker exempt. The referral to county planning is in progress. And his APA is non-jurisdictional and the letters in files, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, with that, I will open the public meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment?
Matt, excuse me, the I did have to submit a new county referral. And that came back as again as no county impact.
Okay.
But it is a new referral for this variance.
But it is no longer in process. It is complete.
It is complete now.
Thank you.
Correct.
So anyone in the audience who wishes to comment? With that, I will close the public hearing. We'll be going through the application in detail. Property address is five twenty-eight Gailey Hill Road, Lake Luzerne, county tax map I D number two nine two point eight dash one dash six. Applicant Michael Goodheart, seven Harris Avenue, Lake Luzerne, New York, one twenty-four six five one eight five seven three seven four five two. Mike Goodheart. Owner Michael Nancy Seed and Matt Witten, five twenty-eight Gailey Hill Road and five fifty. Muska long Muska. Muskingham, what I have no idea, Mr. Goodheart.
I don't know for sure the pronunciation either.
Muskingham, it looks like.
Muskingham.
Muskingham, okay.
I can tell you that.
Pacific Palisades, California, nine zero two seven two. Uh, and their phone email. Release being sought from chapter Article five. Mention table A side yard setback. As was stated in the opening, this was the this is the second time this has appeared before the zoning board. Uh, with modification. Property was purchased in two thousand and seven, porch was added at that time, garage is also added at that time. Description of the proposed action is to extend the porch to the end of the house and ten feet deep. The requirement for the side setback is a total of thirty feet. Uh, the map shows the side setback being twenty-one feet, nine inches.
I think it's twenty-two, but twenty-two, nine, twenty-two.
Twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two, nine.
So they're looking for seven point three feet, right?
Correct.
It shouldn't it say like seven point three feet somewhere in the application?
Seven feet, three.
Three inches, seven feet, three inches.
It does, um.
There's no like physical numbers on the application to go by.
We had it in the map on the back page. We had to lay out the tent with three on the one side. And a twelve foot six on the opposite side.
I was just saying in most very most applications, it's pretty specific, you know, we're looking for a five foot setback or a three foot, there's no.
Well, it's it's implied on the cover sheet. If you look at the cover sheet. Side yard setback variance total of thirty feet minimum required for both sides. Proposing twenty-two feet, nine inches change from the area variance from before. Ten feet, three on one side and and twelve feet, six on the other side. We just didn't do equals seven point
Okay.
Seven feet, three inches.
Long as we can go by what the cover sheet implies, we're good.
Are they all right with that, Mary, to go with that? Or should it say seven feet, three inches somewhere?
Um, I mean, I wouldn't deny this application based on that, but maybe moving forward. The the C B A should make sure that somewhere in the application, it's specific as to the the setback they're seeking.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not attacking this specific variance. I'm just saying if we're granting a variance, we should have specific numbers on the application rather than implying something on the cover page.
I absolutely concur with your statement.
It is in the public caring notice that fit that amount.
Okay.
Okay.
Now go through the variance standards as we've discussed prior to opening the public meeting. Question number one. Describe how this requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Response is this addition does not affect anyone's view and is not visible from the street. I have been to the property. Um. I concur that this response is accurate. Karen?
Yeah, I've also been to the property and the characteristics of the house. I don't think it's anything extraordinary. Um. Karen, was there not a question before in the last time we had this for wetlands in the A P A?
Um, yes, but they got a response back from the Adirondack Park Agency that um it was non-jurisdictional to them. The wetlands were too far away to be any issue.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I agree with his answer.
Annie?
Question answered, and I agree.
Uh, question answered is is no longer an acceptable response when going over these. It's either you agree, disagree, or require additional information.
I agree.
Rail?
I agree.
I agree.
Mike?
I agree.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. Response is we reduce the depth of the addition to ten feet from the original twelve feet request. Uh, since this is the second time Mr. Goodheart has been here. Um. I think most of us were on the board and we're here for that. Um, yes, they have reduced the size of the requested variance to reduce the impact. Um. I concur with the answer.
So my just reviewing, I'm obviously looking at the plot plan, so I'm sure you reviewed because it really isn't any other alternative, and I know the property drops off in the back, so. And it already is a two-story house, is that correct?
Well, it's a walkout basement. It's a one-story house with a walkout basement.
Okay, so there was no other place that you could accomplish this at all?
Uh, no, because the septic in the backyard. Um, and the other side's only ten feet, so there's there's no place and they're trying to expand the use of the one room, and if they went any other directions, it would even be more of an encumbrance.
Okay, okay, fair enough. I I agree with your your answer. Thank you.
I agree with the answer.
Rail?
I have a quick question about this um, new system, like being able to what you just said, how we have to agree or what was it, agree, disagree, or?
Ask for more information.
Okay, so like if somebody agrees to all of them or disagrees, does that change like their vote at the end or? I'm just trying to catch it because that's that's new.
Yep.
It is.
So I'm trying to find.
It is, it is, it is new. But it is based on the fact that in a previous meeting when we went through this, the responses were several responses were question is answered. Um, I have been counseled by counsel that that is not an acceptable response. It's an acceptable response when we are reviewing the application, the question is answered. But it is not an acceptable response when we are reviewing this to decide whether or not to grant an area variance because what we had, what we do has to be defensible. So whatever, whatever decision we decide to make, if we make any decision, there has to be a basis for that, and that is that is why we're doing things slightly different.
Thank you, and I'm not questioning.
I
Trying to
I have no
Catch up because, you know, every meeting we learn something new.
Yes, we do.
Mm-hmm.
Can I just?
Yes, she wants to say something, I can tell.
Yeah, so I just want to um explain the reason behind that. So if a decision of the board is ever challenged through an Article seventy-eight, we can only rely on what happened at this meeting. No one gets to testify. No one gets to tell the judge what you were thinking at that time. The only thing we get to do is submit all the material from this meeting. And then that's what the judge bases his decision on. So if you don't put your rationale on the record or in the minutes or on the recording, then the judge doesn't know why you reached your decision and he will overturn.
Excellent. It's a good system that, thank you.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm asking, I'm not going at you or anything. It's just a new. And I want to understand what I'm.
Yep.
And I would encourage you, if you don't agree with the answer, to explain why you don't. Don't just say I agree or don't agree. I I would encourage you to put more reasoning on the record.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that to our town. That's cool. I'm sorry, can you get back on base?
That's okay, so uh what is your position on the on the response?
On number two?
Yes.
They did come back for a second one. And I mean I agree with it. I agree.
Okay, Mike?
I agree.
Question number three, explain whether this request is variance is substantial. In our opinion, this is not substantial a substantial variance. Hence, the side of the house has ten foot setback. And the other side is a twelve foot setback. Well, ten and twelve is still twenty-two. Twenty-two is not thirty. The difference between twenty-two and thirty is eight. That's pretty close to thirty percent.
About thirty.
So to me, the request is substantial.
Um, I agree, thirty percent is a substantial request.
I also agree with the thirty percent. It's substantial.
I agree it's substantial for the thirty feet. And like I said before, everything is very tight up there. Once one person does it and the word gets out, everybody wants to do it, so that's why I think it's substantial.
Mike?
I agree that the request is substantial substantial when it's encroaching on thirty percent of the bearing of the what's allowed.
Question number five, describe how the requested I'm sorry, bore. I'm going to get ahead. Describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Response is this variance will have a minimal impact on the neighborhood. Um, again, having been out there. Uh, it's just, it's talking about extending the porch back an additional ten feet. Um. I don't see that it has any impact on the neighborhood other than the fact that it does not meet the zoning requirements. So I agree that the impact is minimal on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I also agree that's a minimal and then also with the respect last, the last time Mr. Goodheart was here. Um, we had our concerns with the A P A and the wetlands and everything else and since and that is also an environmental thing, which is not an impact on this, so I agree with his answer that is a minimal impact.
I also agree it's a minimal impact on the neighborhood.
Rail?
I agree it's a minimal impact on the neighborhood.
I have one more question that I want to pose on that question. Um. What would be the plan for the property owners for pumping the septic?
Oh, I I did talk to Bill Bradley, who was their septic person. And I clarified with him that we would have ten feet on the one side. The side that we're building on is a rather steep slope, but if you've seen it.
Yes.
The other side, there is ten feet. He says, as long as you get ten feet, we're fine. He says, I have no problem. I could change the septic or I could easily pump.
All right, I agree with question number four with stated. Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Response is due to the lot size and shape. This has limited option, limited the options for the homeowner. Uh, I agree that the side lot size and shape limit the options for the homeowner. But it is the homeowner who was requesting to have this extension onto the porch and the it is a self-created difficulty. Jamie?
Yeah, yes, I agree. It's definitely a self-created difficulty. Just because you're asking for it, so.
Annie?
I agree it is self-created.
Rail?
I agree. It is a self-created difficulty.
Mike?
I agree that it's a self-created difficulty.
Does anyone want to have any further discussion?
I'm pretty well set, thank you.
I'm set.
Rail?
Okay.
Mike?
I'm good.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this application.
I will second. Uh. Before we start, uh again different from the way things have been before. Well, it will be a roll call vote and when you respond and in the positive or negative, I request that you explain why your answer is what it is. Again, for the same reasons as discussed previously. Thank you.
Eric, Mike?
No.
Fair.
Yeah, the reason being that it's a substantial variance. And with the septic issue with trying to get a vehicle around through the back.
Great, thank you.
Rail? No. I believe it's a self-created difficulty. It's a want more of a need. Um. And that's my reasoning.
Thank you. Annie?
Yes. And
You have to give the yeah?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, um, yes, it is self-created, but it's also, we all have wants and needs. Um, and I think that that's a reasonable want. I don't believe the the septic would be that much of a problems. I also use Bradleys and they they can get into the area without a problem. And that's my answer.
Thank you. Jamie?
Um, before you answer, I think let's stop with the rationale behind the answers and we'll just depend on what we've already said.
Okay.
So just yes or no?
Okay.
Yes. I had so many.
Yes.
Sorry.
So we have three yes and two no. Okay.
How many answer board? Five.
Five.
So the variance is approved.
Okay.
So then your next step will be to apply for the
Building. But I have to give you cut these the plans.
Right, I have the.
You have the one that's stamped, that's what you need.
Well, the county needs two sets of stamps. I don't necessarily need one stamp, my stamp.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll need three sets, the application. And the fee, okay?
Yep, uh, see you on Monday, right?
Okay.
Because you're not there till you're not there tomorrow.
I am not, Chris is there, but we won't have the packet put together and finalized.
Monday.
Okay.
Are we all set?
You're all set.
Thank you.
Unless you want to sit there.
No, I think I've 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 warmed the seat long enough. There's other people waiting.
Thank you. Certainly.
Um, so when you're voting and you're putting your reasons on the record, just keep in mind that you are you are supposed to be ruling on the balancing test, which is um, if the application is approved, how will that affect the applicant as opposed to affecting the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood? Um. And the criteria that you go through um is supposed to help you reach that balancing test. So when you're going through your reasons, if you could stick to those five criteria and then say how it helped you reach the decision in that balancing test, that would be the best option.
Yeah, so you want us to basically do a little review on each question as we?
I don't, as long as you discuss it beforehand when you're going through the questions, I think that's sufficient. But if you're going to give a reason, just keep the balancing test in mind.
Second item on the agenda is the public hearing for area variance two zero two-two A V dash four. Applicant Lisa Williams, owner of three forty-nine Gailey Hill Road, Lake Luzerne. Asking for a height variance for an accessory structure. Karen, would you read the public notice?
Please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the town of Lake Luzerne, the zoning Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven oh five P M. At the regularly scheduled meeting, the meeting will be held at the municipal complex five thirty-nine Lake Avenue. Town of Lake Luzerne to hear comments on the following area variance twenty twenty-two A V dash four. Applicant owner Lisa M. Williams, parcel number two eight five point dash two dash eleven. Residential rule zone, R U, one Residential rule zone R U one point two nine acres, location three forty-nine Gaily Hill Road. The applicant has applied for a variance from the zoning board of appeals for relief from the zoning ordinance of Lake Luzerne, Article Six General Regulations, Accessory Buildings and Uses, Section B five. The maximum height of any accessory structure shall be one and one-half stories or eighteen feet, whichever is less, except that it shall not exceed the height of the principal building. The principal building's height on this parcel is twelve feet, nine inches to the underside of the ridge and the height of the accessory structure is seventeen feet, nine inches to the underside of the ridge. They are asking for a variance of the height of this structure. A copy of the application as well as other supporting documents are on file with the office of the zoning officer and may be reviewed by interested members of the public during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M to one thirty P M. All parties in interest and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard in respect to the proposed variance at the public hearing. Persons may respond by letter, appear in person or by agent or participate via Zoom. Access Zoom by computer at zoom dot com or by phone at six four six five five eight eight six five six. The meeting access code for Zoom is nine oh two six eight seven nine seven six four. Karen Putney, zoning officer, Town of Lake Luzerne, P O Box three seventy five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, New York, one two eight four six five one eight six nine six two seven one one, extension four. Lake Luzerne four at albany dot T W C B C dot com, published May first, twenty twenty-three.
Before I open the public meeting, um, a couple of things I would like to point out. The kind of like Luzerne zoning regulations definition of building height states that the building height is a vertical distance measured from the lowest point of the existing grade adjacent to the foundation to the uppermost portion of the structure excluding chimneys. And reviewing this application, um, we do not have a height for the structure. We do not have the application has provided no information. The information which is in this application was provided by Mr. Muller using his laser tape to determine the heights of these structures. It is not responsibility of the zoning board to provide technical information in an application. The drawings which are submitted are generic. They refer to multiple different sizes. So we do not actually have the dimension you're asking. We don't know what the variance you're requesting actually is. I will open the public meeting for public comment. The meeting will remain open to allow you to provide the board with that information so that we may proceed. And with that, I will open the public meeting for comment. Karen, do you have any letters?
I did not receive any letters, any emails or any phone calls where anyone left any comments on this application. Matt, just one thing before we move forward any further, um, I need to make for the record, a correction to the cover sheet of April thirteenth. Um, partway down where it says, dear applicant at the meeting of the Town of Lake Luzerne zoning board of appeals held on the thirteenth day of I had put March there, twenty twenty-three, that needs to be corrected to April for for um, that meeting that is, that was incorrect. And I found the error when I was doing the public hearing notice. I just want to make that correction.
Thank you. Is it adequate that that correction be um cited in the minutes of this meeting?
It was not in the public hearing notice, right? That was correct.
That was correct.
Then yes, it's that.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Does anyone in the audience have any comments?
Can you, can you hold on one moment? We want to get a mic to you. Please.
I'm Theodore Bodette. My wife and I live across the street at three fifty-two Gaily Hill Road. We have no objections to any of the structures they've put on this property. And the improvements they made on the property, the what they tore down was a much higher building. And it was uh, eyesore, probably the worst eyesore in the town of Lake Luzerne.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Russ Speedy, I live on Ten Bay Road. I know what the property looked like before he put the building up. And like Ted said, it wasn't eyesore. The building was a lot higher than what's there now, and I think they improved the property.
Thank you. Anyone else? The public hearing will remain.
One more.
Oh.
Sorry, man.
I'm Anita Bodette. Uh, I live at three fifty-two Gaily Hill. Uh, I concur with the statements that have been made and I would think that because you have received nothing in opposition from anyone in the neighborhood, that would be a fair indication that people are fine with this improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have one Zoom participant that just put their hand up.
Okay.
Zoom participant area code one three zero. You may unmute yourself.
Hello?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Hello? Okay, perfect. Great, thank you. Uh, I would, um, just on the basis of the applicant. Um, you know, I I think if I go through the the test that was outlined at the beginning of the meeting of does the structure alter the character of the neighborhood? Yes, it is a very tall metal structure that is pretty unique to the neighborhood. Um, have any alternatives been explored? I'm not sure, but I don't, I think the fact that we're here after the building has been constructed suggests that they did not apply for a permit to begin with. Um, and I think that, you know, that should be considered. I think this is a very substantial request. And I think it was a self-created difficulty. And I think that, you know, ultimately there are other people on Gaily Hill Road who we've heard uh, today, and I know have uh, raised appeals to this board before in advance of constructing improvements to their property. And uh, today's applicant has been approved in advance. Uh, the previous applicant has been approved in advance of conducting work. Uh, the current applicant that we're discussing did not seek a permit and is only seeking relief after the fact, uh, which I think is not in accordance with the spirit of what the sport is hoping to achieve. Thank you.
Uh, sir, could I get your name for the record? I guess not.
My name is Ed Babcock, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last name.
It's Edward Babcock, B A B C O C K.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other Zoom comments, Chris?
That's all that I have here.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay. Public hearing remains open. We need to receive the information on the actual height to the peak of the accessory structure, the height of the primary structure and what the specific variance you requesting is, because we do not have those numbers.
As far as I understand it, our measurements are seventeen point nine feet from our measurements. We measured myself with Mr. Manett and his measurement and the structure was constructed as a fifty-one by thirty unfinished floor.
Nowhere in the application do you state what the measurements are. Measurements that are in here, Karen, correct me please if I'm wrong, are the ones that Jamie took.
Correct, Jamie. I asked Jamie to go with me to the property to get some kind of a measurement because I didn't know if it complied or not. And the measurement is taken to the underside of the eve, not to the top of the peak of the roof on your building.
Based on limitations of the equipment.
Correct.
So what was the measurement we came up with when we were up there?
That is what I.
That's what's, that's what's on the paper.
But what the actual variance they're asking for is, I don't know, because I don't know how thick the ridge is, how wide the ridge is, the, you know, the depth of it. But again, it's not up to me to have to figure that out.
It's almost kind of like what you said before, where it wasn't something called out.
Yeah, I mean, like on the last one, we base it off the implementation of the cover page.
But those measurements were given.
Those were actual measurements and provided to us on a drawing. Here we have we have no measurements provided by the applicant.
So that's kind of like shame on us for accepting the application incomplete.
Um, I had this discussion previously, I was not at the uh, the meeting when the application was accepted. Um, the application was accepted as complete. That does not mean that the application was correct. Lacking the information, the application is correct. This is providing the applicant with the opportunity to provide that information and leave the public meeting open.
Okay. So if they have.
I would, I would object to that only insofar as the fact that we appeared before this board, no one raised that objection. At the time, we received the denial and proceeded in that light, council.
Received the denial? You didn't receive a denial?
We did receive denial, that's how we got here.
Not from this board. Not from this board.
A denial was issued for a variance of five feet.
That's.
And that was published as such. And then it was published incomplete by the town.
Nope. So those are different things. Um, right now you have to come to the board for an area variance, which is why you're here.
To obtain the area variance, to sit before the board, you have to have a definitive variance requirement.
Which is why they need that.
Marked incomplete last time. She's been asked to provide.
No, the application can be complete and they can ask for additional information. They can all, they can also make a motion tonight and rule on it, or they can keep it open and allow you to provide more information, which is probably what you wanted to.
Information by way of a uh, certified engineer rather than come back before the board, go through the application time.
I'm sure.
I am. Perfect acceptable.
And I'll have my engineer provide certified standards.
I think that.
Thirty-one by fifty-one is not refuting. It's just the height and it's going to be the height. No matter what it is.
Do we need the height of the house too, as a comparison? Yes, we need the height of the house too.
That's fair enough. Submitted to the board certified with attorney's affirmation.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approving the minutes from the zoning board meeting from January twenty twenty-three. You guys are welcome to stay, but.
We just gonna submit on papers, council.
That's the decision of the board. Is that sufficient if they submit it through Karen to the board?
It is sufficient for us for me to provide to the, to the remainder of the board so that we can make a decision at the next meeting. If the, if it is determined, at at the next meeting, we will go through the exact same with that new information, which is what we need. We will go through the same procedure we went through with Mr. Goodheart's application before you. We'll go through every step of the application, every question and the responses, and then the board will vote. We will make a decision as to whether or not to make a motion to approve.
Because we have surgery. Makes sense also.
I have no issue with them appearing by Zoom.
As long as it's okay with the board, it's fine.
Does, does anyone have an objection?
No, I think it's totally legal now, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
If opposition can be like Zoom, my understanding is everyone has to be able to appear the same way.
Yeah, yeah.
I will submit a courtesy copy, council.
Okay, that's fine.
So this was not tabled, it was just left open.
The public hearing is open.
I'm just going to put left open, no further action.
So, yeah.
The January twenty twenty-three minutes, has everyone had an opportunity to look at those?
Yes.
Does anyone have any comment? Or do you need time to look at them?
No, I look at them.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Twenty twenty-three.
I did.
All right.
You get them?
Oh, yeah, no, I, it's fine.
Rail?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that both sets of minutes that you've approved or?
That was just the January.
Right.
The January. Uh, February came out just this afternoon, correct?
Yeah.
Has has anyone or everyone seen the February minutes?
Yes.
Yes, I've seen them.
Yes, does anyone have any question or comment?
No, sir. I make a motion to accept February's minutes, twenty twenty-three. I'll second that motion.
You go all the way?
Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Yes.
Karen, none? Carrie?
Uh, under new and old business, old business, having having read, having read the minutes for the February meeting this afternoon, I am woefully negligent and in uh, doing anything regarding Karen's comments on zoning issues. So I need to take care of that. But I guess that's but the old business moving into new business. Um, I don't have anything additional.
For new business?
For new business.
Karen, you have any new business going down the fact that you'd share with us?
Um, I don't have anything to report today, no.
Can I? May I ask about Mr. Reed, where, where we are with that?
Um, he has submitted a preliminary plat to the planning board. They are having a public hearing on that um, on May twenty-fourth and the subdivision maps have been referred to the town's engineer the um, for review to make sure that the roads and everything are designed to um, subdivision specs.
And how did he do with the APA?
He has not finished with the APA because in order that's partially why they brought it to the planning board. Um, their application with APA is incomplete because they needed determination by the town whether they're going to be willing to accept the road or not, road and stormwater um, drainage system.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh. Annie? Anything?
Oh.
No. He talks on camera.
Rail?
I'm good. I have one question. I could probably look it up. I knew Karen would have the answer quick. Do we have any regulations on the size, size of real estate signs?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the answer, but there, um, I know that you there are regulations about them in here. I don't know if the size.
It's just terrible looking. Got you really much better.
The color? I follow that yet.
No more than one sign, twelve square feet in area. So that would be like four by three. Something making up twelve square feet.
No, we learn stuff every day.
You have a zoning ordinance book though, right?
Yep.
Okay, just, just making sure because one of my planning board members did not have a subdivision book. Okay, just, just making sure because one of my planning board members did not have a subdivision book, and I, so I just wanted to double check.
Oh, one other item, I just wanna. Pass those out.
Everyone saying?
Yeah. Um, that is the structure that was demoed on the Williams property. That was originally going to be turned into a storage facility, but was dilapidated and could not be. And so it was demo.
Which they got a premise to demo it.
Which they got a permit to demo, yes, that will be a subject for discussion in the future.
Certainly, so. If, if one raise after, I have two. It was, you know, it's a player of, and that's, and then out and on and go forward and back. So maybe it was twenty-five, seventy-five. And they specified. But there's no way that that could be considered a storage. We don't, we wanna.
I just wanted to see it.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else?
I'm all good, thank you.
Good.
I'm saying, thank you.
Mike?
I'm good, I'm also.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.